Welcome, everyone, to the Weaver County Commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 4th. A big day here in Weaver County and across the country with Election Day. I always love this day, Commissioners. We will go ahead with our agenda, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll ask the audience to join us, and then after that... I don't see Mr. Ratalick.
That's two in a row.
That is two in a row. Stacy, would you mind? An invocation? After the pledge? Sorry, I should have asked you ahead of time.
You got Stephanie, too.
Okay. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to gather today as leaders of our county and make decisions in the best... for the best of our citizens of the county. Please bless that we will be mindful of the needs of others, and please bless that those who are struggling at this time will be able to receive and be able to fulfill their needs. We ask that we will go about this day and have others in mind when we say these things, and in Jesus Christ's name.
Amen. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Item C, Commissioner's Comments. Commissioners, do you have anything?
None for me today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Harvey?
None, but I'll articulate it.
Okay. I do have a couple of things. First of all, the county is going to have a turkey, ham, and food drive, so we want to make sure that all the residents of Weaver County have a great Thanksgiving. And to make a difference this holiday season, we're inviting our employees to donate turkeys, hams, and food items. Ask that you bring your donations to the Commission Office by November 19th at 10:00 a.m., and then all of those donations will be taken to local food banks. Oh, here's a note. Donuts for the department that donates the most.
Wow.
Okay. And the other item I have on Commissioner's Comments is our stall of fame. Is that funny?
With all gauges.
Okay. Our stall of fame. Ricky, I'm going to turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Chair Bollos. We have a saying in our office of qualifications to hire employees, and it's called jumping up and down. We want to hire employees that we are so excited to have on our team that we jump up and down. And almost a decade ago, I don't know, probably about eight years ago or something like that, we had one of those hires that we brought over into our office. She already worked at the county, but we brought her over to our office, and that's Ms. Stephanie Ebert. And we've been jumping up and down ever since because she jumped into her role and just excelled tremendously. Everything she touches runs more smoothly and is accurate. It's really impressive. So she's provided tremendous help, especially in the tax administration portion of our world, which is just shockingly complex within determining tax rates, especially with redevelopment agencies and all of the taxing entities that have to be managed in the county. It's really impressive what she has been able to do. And over the past five months, I guess four months, she's been... had been doing double duty, almost, with the departure of Scott Park, our comptroller. Stephanie stepped in and did both her job and his job for a period of time while we found a replacement and shouldered a vast majority of the work that Scott has been doing over the years and that he did so well. And she jumped into it in the middle of crazy budget season and just took that on and did an excellent job throughout the budget season, her first time, very little notice and time to prepare for this. And she just steps in and serves with a smile and does so with excellence. And so we really... we wanted to recognize Steph for the work that she's done, not just in our office, but for the county for so many years. She's just been a huge part of the team here and has been very helpful. Unfortunately, with my scattered... my brain being scattered for elections, I forgot to invite the rest of our clerk auditor group to come here. So she's like the only one. So, anyway, we'll let them know as well, but we just wanted to give a shout out and a huge thank you to Stephanie Ebert.
Appreciate that. Thanks, Ricky. Ricky, we do want you in our photo. We have a keychain step, but the parking spot's really nice. Smile on three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. Commissioners, I think we could probably replay last week's comments with the budget and we'd hear all about Steph, but I'll give you a chance to add anything you want.
Well, there's certain people in this county that we just couldn't operate without, and Stephanie is one of those, from understanding tax, the tax position, as Ricky said. And that's not an easy field to navigate, as you look at all the state laws that we have to deal with and then take us into budget sessions. And I think some of us were a little worried after Mr. Park left us, wondering, okay, how are we going to get through this? But, boy, Steph stepped up to the plate, and I'll tell you, in my opinion, we didn't miss a beat because of her expertise, and she knows the numbers, and we rely upon her a great deal to make sure that we're making the right decisions for the public as we spend those tax dollars, and well-deserved recognition.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey?
Just... she's without guile. She's just a phenomenal person. I'm really grateful she's on the Weaver County team. Thank you.
Yeah, I echo both of you, and I think we said it all last week, Stephanie, and embarrassed you enough, but one thing I do really like about Stephanie over Scott Park is that she opens those blinds.
Yeah.
And when I come down the hall, she doesn't hide under her desk, so that's really nice. Thanks for everything, Stephanie.
That might speak to something.
You do awesome. Okay. Commissioners, item E, agenda-related public comments. Comments will be taken for any item that's listed on the agenda. We ask anybody who comes forward, please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to item F, consent items. Number one, request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $417,257.73. Number two, requests for approval of warrants, numbers 106350 through 106416, and 493690 through 493792 in the amount of $1,331,867.78. For a summary of warrants and purchase orders, Ricky Hatch, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We issued 13 purchase orders this week for $417,000. Two-thirds of that amount, $279,000, was for dispatch to purchase server equipment. Thirteen percent, or $54,000, is for the Sheriff's Office to purchase ballistic vests for the SWAT team, and seven percent, or $31,000, is for the paramedic services to buy a firetruck. We issued 170 checks this week for $1.3 million. Just over half that amount, or $674,000, was an escrow release to Creekside Development as well as payment for professional services for the GSS WAC. Thirteen percent, or $167,000, is for the library, and that was for books and materials, software, utilities, and some building maintenance. Seven percent, or $95,000, was to purchase an HVAC unit at the Ice Sheet to pay for services for the Weaver Center remodel study and then to buy software. Six percent, or $86,000, is for the jail to purchase food, utilities, medical and mental health services, and building maintenance. Our top five payees this week: Nilson Homes for $668,000, Utah State University, $63,000, Salmon Mechanical LLC, $63,000, EBSCO Industries, $53,000, and Diamond Tree Experts for $32,000.
Questions, Commissioners?
None for me.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hatch. Number four, requests for approval of the minutes for the October 28th, 2025 meeting. Number five, requests for approval of new business licenses. Number six, requests for approval of a contract buy-in between Weaver County and Wasatch Front Junior High School Rodeo Club to hold the Wasatch Front Junior High School Rodeo at the Golden Spike Event Center. Number seven, requests for approval of a contract buy-in between Weaver County and the USA Utah Wrestling to hold Nightmare on the Mat at the Golden Spike Event Center. Number eight, requests for approval of a contract buy-in between Weaver County and Mules Ear Outdoor LLC to operate a bike-ski concession at the North Fork Park. Number nine, requests for approval to renew contract buy-in between Weaver County and American Correctional Association to pursue re-accreditation of the Weaver County Correctional Facility under ACA's National Recognized Standards. Number 10, requests for approval of a contract buy-in between Weaver County and American Correctional Association to pursue facility accreditation under the Federal Prison Rape Elimination Act, PRIA, standards. Number 11, requests for approval of a donation of impact fees in the amount of $2,300 to Eden Valley Trails Trust for an engineer's estimate on a future selection... section of the Pineview Loop Trail. Number 12, requests for approval to renew the contract buy-in among Weaver County, Davis County, and Northern Utah Economic Alliance, NUEA, for support with regional economic development efforts. And number 13, requests for approval of a contract buy-in between Weaver County and Delta Dental for the 2026 dental insurance. Any comments, Commissioners?
I do have one comment, if I may.
Yes, please.
Regarding F-12, I just wanted to let everybody know that we've worked on that contract with NUEA, and at our meeting, we had actually last week, we had invited Box Elder County and also Morgan County, and I'm very happy to announce that we're working now and have support of both Box Elder and Morgan to bring them into NUEA, so it's truly a regional. Our next stop will be at Cache County and hope to really then recognize our alliance as being a true northern Utah, which I think is great for our region.
That's great. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
F-6.
Okay.
Has to do with the Rocky Mountain Wasatch Front Junior High Rodeo Club. Isn't it wonderful that we have a rodeo for junior high students? Talk about perpetuating the heritage of Weaver County out at our Golden Spike Event Center. Madam Chair, this is one of the largest junior high rodeos in the United States, and it was a brainchild that started by our folks at the Golden Spike and Culture Parks and Recreation. It's something that we build on our own and where we involve people that have interest in equine, and it's just a great thing that we do out there. So I'm very, very proud of our folks out there, and they make things work, and so this is a great thing. I just wanted to point out, what are we doing for youth? This is just one of the thousands of things, literally, that we do for... that affect youth all across the western United States, not just Utah, but it's held right here in our own backyard, so it's really phenomenal.
Great. Okay. With that, Commissioners, I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve those consent items as presented F-1 through and including 13 this morning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Item G, action items. Number one, request for approval of Resolution 42-2025 of the County Commissioners of Weaver County designating Weaver County Clerk Auditor as Weaver County's Chief Administrative Officer, Mr. Chris Crockett.
Thank you, Commissioners. This request comes to you as a result of recent legislation that was passed regarding data privacy. It's the... we are commencing on a very long project that will take several years to implement, and it's going to be putting in changes and oversight over the processes that we have in the county where the county takes in personal information with regards to applications for like land use or any other types of things where the county provides services where we have to require personal information. There's certain disclosures and notices that will have to be given, and we're going to have to evaluate countywide all of those areas where we will be taking in that information. And the first thing that we need to do is actually appoint someone to oversee this process, and it's actually not going to be a person... well, it will be a person, Ricky, but the Clerk Auditor's office, we can actually designate an elected office. And so when... if and whenever that does change, it will remain with that office to oversee this program. So we would recommend that the Clerk Auditor's office be appointed as the Chief Administrative Officer over data privacy.
Just to be clear, I said Chief Administrative Officer, and it is for data privacy.
Yes, that does include... would include Grandma. We went over that this morning in my staff meeting. So the Chief Administrative Officer, that new legislation does bring in Grandma under that.
Any questions for Mr. Crockett?
None for me.
No, and I... especially, it's an easier decision now because we have so much confidence in that office and how it's being managed and run.
Yeah. The important thing to remember is that Ricky has to now do this all by himself. So, no, the law allows him to delegate and designate different employees to assist him with this.
So it would be Grandma Ricky?
Yes, Grandma Ricky.
Okay. No, no questions, Commissioners. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the ordinance, Resolution 42-2025, as presented by Mr. Crockett today.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second.
Roll call vote for Resolution 42-2025, Commissioner Forre.
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Chair Bollos.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Number two, request for approval of the first reading of an ordinance to combine the two planning commissions into a single planning commission covering all of unincorporated Weaver County. Mr. Cortland Erickson, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. With the incorporation of much of the Ogden Valley coming up right away, there is not going to be a lot of concentrated development and population in what's left of the unincorporated areas of the Ogden Valley. And as it exists right now, the county has a planning advisory area that covers all of the unincorporated Ogden Valley and a separate planning advisory area that covers everything in western Weaver County. And to address this change, one of the options that is before you, and the way this ordinance is presented to you today, is to dissolve both of the planning commissions and enact this ordinance that would cover both of those planning advisory areas with a single planning commission. And so that is what the state law allows you to do in this situation, at least that is an option. You could keep a separate planning commission in the Ogden Valley if you chose to, but for purposes of efficiency and reducing expenses, it's been suggested that it might be best just to consolidate them into one, given the demographics that will be remaining in the unincorporated area in the Ogden Valley. So this ordinance would accomplish that. It comes with corresponding revisions to the county code and also the rules of order that cover the planning commission, just to clean things up and make it clear that there is only one planning commission. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
No questions or comments?
Okay.
Cortland, I appreciate your work on this. I think we all knew this was coming about, especially with the incorporation. This is a prudent measure that we take on behalf of the county. The amount of remaining unincorporated land in Ogden Valley just doesn't justify a full planning commission. I think it's... you hit it on the head. We need to make sure that those taxpayers are getting their money's worth. But can you step through the process, then, if we dissolve both planning commissions? I'm assuming there'll be like an application process, so those members currently on the Western Weaver Planning Commission could apply because they still are in an incorporated area. Those that are on the Ogden Valley Planning Commission that reside within the incorporation would not be part of that process because they're now ability... they'd have the ability to apply to the New City Planning Commission. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. So they would be the Ogden Valley Planning Commissioners who reside within the area that's going to be incorporated would not be eligible to serve on the county planning commission anymore because they would not live in the unincorporated area.
Correct.
And yes, you would need to appoint people based on applications, and you are free to invite any existing Western Weaver Planning Commissioners to apply and to take other applications if you desire, and then it's up to you to appoint based on applicants that apply for those positions.
Great. And Madam Chair, I would just say this, you know, the... lower Weaver County Planning Commission has done an outstanding job, in my opinion, of making sure they follow statute and following our general plan. I would hope that we encourage all those current members to apply. This does not in any way mean, you know, an effort to make sure that they are not part of the future planning commission, just one of the... really one of the things we just have to go through. So.
Any other comments?
Only that I agree. We've got a great representation with our lower Planning Commission, which will be just our planning commission here in a little while. I do... I would think it would be a good idea for us to have representation from the unincorporated, whatever, the remaining part of that unincorporated area.
I agree.
Up there on that planning commission. So I think as we look forward, I don't have any issue with this idea of where we're headed.
Okay. Just for the information of the public, we had a work session yesterday talking about this, and we talked about the application process and kind of the timing of that with a new planning commission where the body will have to be reappointed after this ordinance is officially adopted. We would look to appoint those members on December 2nd. We won't have a meeting next Tuesday to do the final reading of the ordinance, and so that would be done on November 18th. That gives us two weeks. A question for you, Cortland. Can we open that up for applications now, or do we need to wait until the final adoption of the ordinance?
You could open it up now. I'm not aware of any reason that you couldn't open it up now, knowing that it's not final. It's just kind of in anticipation of what you plan to do.
Okay.
And one comment on that, if I may. Appointing December 2nd should work really well. The 15-day... sorry. The statute imposes a 15-day effective date delay after you pass an ordinance, so if you pass it on November 18th, then it will take effect at the earliest December 3rd. That's the 15-day mark. So if you made those appointments on November... or sorry, December 2nd to be effective December 3rd, we would fill in the December 3rd date on the ordinance as the effective date, and that should work perfectly.
Perfect. Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. Commissioners, if there are no other questions, I'm ready for a motion on this.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the first reading of the ordinance to combine the two planning commissions into a single planning commission covering all of unincorporated Weaver County as presented by Mr. Cortland Erickson this morning.
Second, with the comment, Madam Chair, if permitted.
Yes.
We have the Honorable Andrew Faverro, who's the Chair of that Planning Commission out west here, and Andrew, if you'd be so kind to pass that word on, our thanks for serving, and also this just... you understand now the formality of why we're doing this, and so if everyone would... could encourage them to apply, that'd be great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. I have a motion and a second then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Item three, request for approval of Resolution 43-2025 of the County Commissioners of Weaver County, appointing a member to the Weaver County Audit Committee, Ms. Stacy Skeen.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Audit Committee recently met, and they would like to forward their nomination of Kaylee Beck to be approved... or appointed to the Audit Committee as a citizen member of this committee.
No questions.
None.
Okay. I'm ready for a motion then.
Happy to make a motion that we approve under Resolution 43-2025, appointments to the Weaver County Audit Committee as presented by Ms. Stacy Skeen this morning. I actually chaired that committee meeting, and both of those individuals attended the last meeting, I believe.
It's just Kaylee Beck.
Oh, it's Kay... we're not appointing a public member?
Well, Kaylee is the public member. Kaylee Rhodes is the new internal auditor.
I got confused with the Kayleys.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's Kaylee Beck as a citizen member to fill that vacancy.
Okay. Kaylee Beck, the citizen member. I do my motion under that ordinance.
Okay. A motion.
Second.
And a second.
Roll call vote for Resolution 43-2025, Commissioner Forre.
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Chair Bollos.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Number four, request for approval of an amendment to a resolution, Resolution 44-2025 of the County Commissioners of Weaver County, establishing the Nordic Valley Sewer Improvement District. Ms. Stephanie Russell, welcome.
Commissioners, this is more of an administrative item.
Good morning.
We... good morning. We had created this district a while back. It had lain dormant for quite a while. We reactivated it earlier this year, and we were able to work with this district. They're adding a service to their district. We've been having really great communication with the state auditor, and they have requested that we redo the resolution and add in the water component for this district, so... and it also changes their title a little bit. This will allow Nordic Valley Sewer Improvement District to move forward with their collaboration with the Nordic Valley Public Infrastructure District and some other development projects that are occurring and that have already been approved up in the Ogden Valley.
Any questions?
None for me.
None for me.
Great.
Okay. If not, entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 44-2025 as presented by Ms. Russell this morning.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second.
Roll call vote for Resolution 44-2025, Commissioner Forre.
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Chair Bollos.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Number five, request for approval of a pass-through funding agreement buy-in between Weaver County and the State of Utah Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity for the Corn Fairy Tournament.
Commissioners, this past legislative session, we were able to secure an appropriation for the Corn Fairy Tournament that was hosted in Weaver County. This is a fantastic event that brought in significant amount of tourism dollars as well as economic opportunities and a little boost to our economy. The grant was approved in the legislature, and this is the final part of securing that pass-through funding, is the contract, so that we can get that reimbursed.
Any questions?
None for me.
Commissioner Harvey?
None. Great event was the qualifier for PGA. We had a fantastic turnout, and I want to also compliment those people who are with the OGCC, who made such a great... made such a great impression on this event, especially Mr. Bob Wallace, who heads that team out there. Great, great job. Thank you.
Yeah, we're hoping this stays in our county. It recently relocated from Davis to Weaver.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve this contract between Utah, the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity, and Weaver County for the Corn Fairy Tournament.
And I'll second that with the comment. It was a great event. I think it brought a lot of attention to both Weaver County and Ogden City, and the golfing was amazing.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Number six, request for approval of a contract buy-in between Weaver County and Ammon Nelson for representation of indigent persons in the Second District Juvenile Court. I don't see Jim Ratalick here.
Commissioners, I haven't read these contracts personally, but I did go over them and asked in my staff meeting if there were any concerns. I know that Brian Barron did work on these ones. I don't know if that's enough for you to consider approval. They're the standard form agreements that we use with all of our other indigent defense attorney contracts. Happy to go and find out any more information that you would like, but in my staff meeting, there were no concerns raised.
Commissioners, if you want to go ahead with this, or...
Yeah, I know that we've had a couple of our independent contracts expire. I think these are reappointments or additional appointments to the indigent defense under Jim Ratalick, so...
Yeah, and those previous contracts, I've gone over those templates that we use. They're very thorough. They have a process for review, and they go over all of the necessary contractual elements that we would expect.
And this is one... And this is one, the standard contract with our defense attorneys that coincides with the rest of our indigent defense. So I'm happy to make a motion if you're ready.
Okay, we'll do this one at a time.
So I'd make a motion that we approve the contract by and between Weber County and Ammon Nelson for representation of the indigent defense person in the 2nd District Court as talked about this morning by Mr. Chris Crockett.
You have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And number seven?
I'd also make a motion that we approve the contract by and between Weber County and Andrew Fitzgerald for representation of the indigent defense persons with cases on the appeal of the 2nd District Court as presented by Mr. Chris Crockett this morning.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Number eight, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Lumen Utility Consult for a review and audit of all Culture Parks and Recreation's utility bills. Mr. Marty Smith, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is an agreement between Lumen Utility Consult and us. What they do is they come in and audit all of our utility bills. Off times, something has been coded incorrectly on a meter or we have enough volume that we could be billed at a different rate for our fuel or gas. So they will take 36 months of bills and audit those and then the agreement is that their payment is a net 50% of the net savings for a term. That term is 42 months in this agreement. They ask for 60 months. We like to do 36 months, but, so, I talked with Liam, they, the reason they requested a little more is, not surprisingly, sometimes the utility companies are slow to make the changes recommended if they find errors in our billing. So that eats into their ability to recoup their costs in their 36-month term because they will not bill us until the net savings are realized. So we've agreed to a 42-month term with Lumen. It's no cost to us and if there is, if they don't find any, you know, errors or needed changes, then they don't get paid. So that's the agreement for you today.
Any questions?
None for me.
Okay, then I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve that contract with Weber County and Lumen Utility Consult for the audit of the Culture Parks and Recreation Departments.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Item H on our agenda, public hearings. Number one, request for a motion to adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're now in a public hearing. For item two, public hearing to discuss amendments to the operating and capital budget of Weber County for the 2025 calendar year. Ms. Stephanie.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, so I met with you yesterday and we went over some quarterly changes to our budget for 2025. That's the year that we are currently in. I know we've been working on our 2026 budget really hard, but we've got to still go back to 2025 and finish up this year. So the majority of the changes had to do with additional funding that we received from grants from our health department, primarily in our WIC funding. And so we've increased some revenues there and have some subsequent expense increases. As well as those changes, we have a couple of additions to our revenues in our conference center that result from additional sales and so forth and activity there that we have to increase our costs. And some building inspection services, same thing, we have additional services that we've been paid for that we have to then turn around and spend some additional dollars on. We had an Eagle Scout project that we received some donations to assist with that individual and some transfer station improvements to a ramp that was just to finish a project out there. And then the largest item on this budget change is some anticipation of some tourism dollars that are transferred over to help fund our OECD renovation. So that's the budget changes that I'm asking for your approval on.
Any questions for Ms. Ebert?
Nope. None.
Okay, all right.
And then?
Stay up here for item three, yeah. Public hearing to discuss compensation increases of executive county officers as part of the amendments to the operating and capital budgets for 2025.
Sure. So we do have a change, a request that we had for an increase, a small increase in the salary of one of our director, our assistant director at Culture Parks and Recreation. He assumed some additional duties and actually ended up saving us quite a bit of money for that additional duties that he was added, that were added to his plate. And so we're just asking for an increase, a small increase to his annual salary.
Questions? Any others, comments?
No hesitation there, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Well deserved, the support as presented.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it for you for now. We have one more public hearing regarding a development agreement to preserve development rights, timing of project development and overall project layout for approximately 416.1, approximately 416.178 acres in F5 zone at approximately 10678 East Highway 39. Mr. Charlie Uier.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Thanks for that approximation of acres.
I like, I like to use approximately because it never is exactly precise unless you have a surveyor's data with that. But you guys have looked at this in work session, the applicant is actually asking for a couple of things to be memorialized by development agreement. They would like the preliminary plan that has been adopted and passed by the planning commission to be memorialized and held in perpetuity for, well, perpetuity until 10 years from now, after which the development agreement would expire if it's not renewed. There is automatic renewal of five years and there's a five-year cycle. So if for some reason in 10 years from now they're not done developing the project, the development agreement would automatically renew unless the city at that point gets involved and says, we're not going to renew this. What it does is it gives them more time to plat the subdivision that they're planning on plating and use the preliminary plan that was previously approved. As it stands right now, the county subdivision code says that they have to plat a new, final subdivision plat once every 12 months and that just doesn't give them, they don't feel like it gives them enough time to get this application through, or excuse me, to get this subdivision done. They mentioned that the subdivision is primarily for family and so they'd like to kind of keep a little bit longer of a timeframe out. In exchange for doing that, they're offering a $50,000 donation to the Trail Foundation of Ogden Valley, I believe is what it's called. The Ogden Valley Planning Commission, they did have a split vote when they passed the positive recommendation on to you guys, but that split vote looked like it hinged on a couple of things that the applicant has resolved. One of those things was the development agreement did have a clause about not allowing moratorium to apply to this project and the other one was setting up a new appeal right under the development, through the development agreement that doesn't already exist. And the planning commission said, we're really not comfortable with that. I don't know that the other, that the three who voted against it would have voted in favor if those two items were addressed, but those were the two items that they specifically cited as being the problem. And so the applicant gave me a heads up and said, let's just pull those from the development agreement altogether. They're not, it's not a make or break, those aren't make or break items. They just really would like to have the time to get their project done for the family and the time that they need. Any questions for me on that?
I don't think questions right now, well, maybe after the public comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thanks.
Okay, Commissioners, item five is public comments. So at this time, we'd ask anyone in the public who'd like to come forward and speak. Let's start with the budget items. If there's anyone who'd like to speak to the budget items, you can come forward at this time. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearing for the development agreement. Alrighty, then we're to item six, which is a motion to leave the public hearing and reconvene our public meeting.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene as a public meeting.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're now out of the public hearing and back into our public meeting where we will take action on the public hearings. We'll start with H2 and 3, a request for approval of resolution 45-2025, amending the operating and capital budget of Weber County, including compensation increases of certain executive county officers for the 2025 calendar year. Commissioners, if there are no comments, then I'm ready for a motion on that resolution.
Motion to approve, motion to approve resolution 45-2025 as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Roll call vote for resolution 45-2025, Commissioner Forre.
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey.
Aye.
Chair Bellows.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. And item H4 is a request for approval of a development agreement to preserve development rights, timing of project development and overall project layout for approximately 416.78 acres located in F5 zone at approximately 10678 East Highway 89. Comments, Commissioners?
I do have a question for Charlie, just, if you wouldn't mind. So if I'm thinking of the right project, I believe that we discussed there was a access road off the highway that was planted as being public and it was just a short little stub road and I suggested that be private just to alleviate snow removal, et cetera, on a very small portion of it. Was that done or?
It's in the development agreement that they will vacate the public nature of that little stub for, to private interests and then the HOA would pick up the responsibility for operations and maintenance of that.
Okay, that's my only question, Madam Chair.
Questions, Commissioner?
None.
Okay, I did want to make one comment. Charlie, I know you said the developer in exchange for this is willing to donate $50,000 to the Trails Foundation and I just want to make it clear that my approval of this is not contingent on a trade for a monetary donation. I appreciate the donation, but for me, that's not, it's not bartering.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Good point. Madam Chair, I'd move to approve the development agreement to preserve the development rights, timing of the project development and overall project layout of approximately 416.178 acres located in an F5 zone at approximately 10,678 East Highway 39 in Ogden Valley.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Before we adjourn, Commissioners, I want to give Commissioner Harvey just 30 seconds to go back to Commissioner comments if you'd like to talk briefly about the grand reopening tonight.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. There is a grand reopening of the Ogden-Eckles Conference Center tonight. There'll be, it starts at 5:00 with the ribbon cutting at 5:30, 5:30 and then it goes, Marty, it's okay?
7:00.
And then it goes till 7:00 PM this evening, thank you. You know, I was in discussions or just remembering earlier this morning and after the acquisition, it's funny, but the cost of the remodel today as it, and the build 25-plus years ago, the cost, 26-years ago actually, this remodel is almost the cost of the rental or to build it. So that's, and so when people say we've got to kind of have affordable housing, that just gives you an idea what, how much things have, costs have increased. Of course, they didn't have LED lighting back then and we've got it now, but that's a lot of money for just one thing. So anyway, just thought, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, now we're to item I.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.